Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, September 24, 2024. It is 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier and Commissioner Emily Klaus, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Carolina Mejia on Zoom, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings here. We have public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. This session is scheduled for 90 minutes to review primarily the proposed agenda for next Tuesday's Board Meeting, October 1st. We do not have a Board Meeting this afternoon. I mentioned a few standing items. So, turning to that agenda, the meeting would be called to order at 2:00 p.m. and we'd have pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Edwards' approval of the agenda and a presentation next regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Clerk of the Board Amy Davis?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have representatives from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office coming in.
Okay. It's purple ribbon, right, for D E S? For National Violence?
We believe so.
All right. Questions for Amy? Opportunity for the public to address the Board and County Manager. Update. Will follow anything, County Manager?
Nothing to report this time.
Perfect. We have consented agenda items A through J. 3A is a central services item, inter-agency agreement with Department of Enterprise Services Energy Program.
Yeah, Rick's here. In a second, get set up. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rick Thomas from Capital Projects Planning. And what we have in front of us today is an inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services with their Energy Program Office. What this inter-agency agreement will allow us to do is to tap into some of their existing consultant contracts to help us do energy audits on some of our buildings that have a requirement to meet the Clean Building Act here in a few years. And so they have specialty contracts that are very similar to an on-call consultant contract that we may have set up to do design work for our facility improvements. And so this, again, is an agreement that we need to basically sign into in order for us to be able to tap into those services. There's no cost associated with this particular action at this point. If the county decides to use any of the services that D E S provides, there would be a supplemental agreement then in order to be able to use those services that may require funding, but that is something that would be addressed with the Board at that particular time if we would have a specific project.
But this saves time, right? Because instead of having to do an RFP?
Yes.
Going to be using basically the state's list of on-calls. Can you talk about how there, what that makeup of the list is, some of the large companies that you mentioned to me?
Sure. There's several different lists. They have different consultants that could work with you on energy audits of buildings. They have other consultants slash contractors that would do energy performance, energy-saving performance contracts. They have other contracts that you can actually use if you want to do like water conservation type of studies. So it's a whole variety of different consultants that do pretty much anything associated with energy within our facilities. And it includes, you know, contractors like Johnson Control, Amerisco. Locally, there's university mechanical contractors. So anyway, a whole variety of different consultants that are a part of this program.
And regarding why we have to do these or why we're doing some of these things, you mentioned that Clean Buildings Act and I attended a presentation that WASAC gave and forwarded some of that information to the County Manager just to make sure we were, you know, tracking it. And I'm glad we are because it applies to certain size buildings. If I remember correctly, there's like medium big and you've got to do one thing on one timeline. Then there's really big and you've got to do another thing on another timeline. And I'm not sure how many buildings. It'd be interesting for the Commissioners to hear at some point, kind of like, how many, you know, how many of the Thurston County have that trigger this obligation and what it really means.
Correct. We have Rebecca Harvey talked to her about this. So she's going to work with the team to put something together for review.
Okay, cool. Any questions on just this inter-agency agreement with D E S? Thank you, Rick. Next up is 3B, Community Planning and Economic Development, HCP Habitat Management Contract, Capital Land Trust.
Hi. I'm Ashley. I'm Community Planning and Economic Development Director. And I think I have the next four items and they're all the same flavor of contract. And I want to thank Rick for doing a really good job of explaining on-call contracts because that's essentially what these are. You may recall in February, we issued a request for qualifications to find partner conservation agencies to join us in implementation of the HCP, which is how the HCP was envisioned. And so we had three responses to that request for qualifications. We have Capital Land Trust, we have ECO Studies and the Center for Natural Lands Management. You'll also see Washington State University Extension written in there because they are a partner that we would like to work with specifically on the Early Blue Violet Prairie down there near Tenino to turn it into a demonstration site. So each one of these contracts are called convenience use contracts. We worked really closely with the P A O's office and we looked at three different models for how you do this kind of contracting, where you're blending professional services, like our site management plans, identifying all the kind of restoration activities that'll happen on the site as well as, you know, getting the site's mowed, getting them fenced and things like that. So what you'll see here are contracts that would last three years with these partner agencies. We've identified the amount over those three years that would be paid to them for three of those firms, it's $350,000.
How much?
Three hundred, up to $350,000. So that's the maximum amount that could be paid out over three years. And so it would work very similar to like the Public Works on-call services, where if we need a site mowed, we'd be able to say, hey, do you have capacity to go out and mow this site? We'd be able to move forward with establishing a task order for that.
What would the bid process be?
Well, so we went through the RFQ process. And so this would allow us to work directly with these firms. Now, if we did not work with one of these firms, let's say they don't have capacity, we always follow the procurement policies that the county has. And, you know, depending on the amount, how many bids we need to get, it's usually up to three.
And then they facilitate the task?
They would facilitate the task.
They don't necessarily go out and do the mowing, but they would have some organization or something that they subcontract with?
ECO Studies and C N L M have staff that do that. And they hire more staff in the summer and the fall season when they know there's a lot more restoration work. What's really nice for these firms is they get a sense of certainty that there is going to be work that they get to do so they can plan ahead and staff accordingly if they know there are certain sites that they're going to be, they're going to be helping the county manage. So we're really, we're really looking forward to having these partnerships established because the individual contracting or tasks for just getting a site mowed or getting a fence fixed, it's very laborious. And so this will definitely speed that up and make it much more efficient for staff to make sure that we're managing the properties that we're bringing into the portfolio.
And then we wouldn't do it because it's, there's special aspects to doing these projects in these areas. We would want to make sure that we're tasking that out to some expert group?
Yep. Each one of these firms specializes in prairie restoration. And each one of the sites in our land conservation system portfolio will have a very specific site management plan that indicates how that site should be taken care of to ensure that we're trying to attract as many endangered species there in the future as possible.
But $350,000 is for per contract or for the total or what is that?
Yeah. So for Capital Land Trust, Center for Natural Land Management and ECO Studies, it's up to $350,000 per each one of those contracts over the course of three years. So basically, think about it as $350,000 a year in total. And so we looked at how much, how much the mitigation fund is bringing in, what the financial plans are, looking out into the future and making sure that we're not over allocating that. And then we have reserved $50,000 per year, so $150,000 total for W S U as they set up the demonstration site and maybe even look for other opportunities for demonstration sites and learning reserves.
Actually, how, so we get these contracts online, that 350 is the ceiling for what could be, what could be? It's not saying you're going to spend that much, but what could be three years' worth of work? How do you ensure competitive pricing once you have these folks on, on contract?
So the amounts that we would be paying are established in the contract in terms of like the services. So they, through the RFQ process, that's what we looked for was, like we negotiated what those rates were based on, what the information that we gathered.
What was the actual bid process that led us to this, though? How did they get selected over someone else? How did the person, how did the firm or the person that got selected get selected over someone else?
Yeah. So we actually didn't have to tell a firm that they were not qualified. The request for qualifications, we got three firms that met all of the qualifications.
So you put a request out on the street, made it available, firms that were interested came to you and said, we're interested, here's our qualifications. Once they met the qualifications, you negotiated prices that were competitive. This allows you to have them on-call so that when something needs to be fixed, you can go and activate them rather than having to do a bid process for every single job, every single time.
I really appreciate that summary. That's very good. These are really specialized services and there's a number of different tasks that are outlined. Anything from establishing an easement. Not every organization is allowed or authorized to be an easement holder. And so only two out of three of the firms are even authorized to do that work or want to be considered for that work. And then you have things like actually taking care of the prairies. Two out of three of the firms want to be on the ground helping us take care of the prairies. And Capital Land Trust, they don't want to fill that role. They want to fill the easement holder stewardship and downloader role. So there's a number of different requirements in our HCP. And well, I feel really fortunate that we got three firms that do meet all of those requirements. It just might not be all three firms doing all things.
Actually, is there a general fund impact?
No. This is all HCP mitigation fund. Nothing will come out of the general fund.
So this is specialized work that not just any mowing company would be able to apply for. That's why you did the RFQ. These are the special qualifications we need. And firms that meet those qualifications or maybe even some that don't sometimes will apply and you evaluate them that way.
Was three a magic number? I mean, what if 10 organizations had applied, you would have chosen three?
Nope.
You can qualify everyone?
You can, you can qualify, yeah.
If they work.
Yeah.
Yeah. If they, if they meet the minimum qualifications and, you know, that negotiation for the competitive pricing turns out. So that's why we did the RFQ in February and we've spent the intervening months negotiating with the firms, working with the P A O's office to make sure that, you know, these contracts are important, they're for three years. And this is really, this is a partner for the county. It's not just kind of a one-time thing. So we really wanted to make sure it went through a full vetting process.
How does the grazing fit in here?
Grazing would be called out in the site management plan. So for Violet Prairie, the Early Blue Violet Prairie that we've been working on with W D F W, that's one right outside Tenino, grazing is part of that site management plan.
But that's not the case for all of these sites because there's a different yield or different production of these certain species based on if they're, right? If there's cows there, we might not get the certain prairie plants as quickly as if we don't. So like we have a portfolio that's diverse, right?
Yes. Yep. And I would say where we can have grazing, we have let the firms know that that is a priority for us to try to partner with our agricultural operators in the area to get grazing out there. And we have developed a list of grazers that are interested in working with the county.
Is this something being overseen by Mr. Jensen? Is that his?
He is on the HCP team and he has gone out there and fixed fences. And we are very grateful to him for doing that in a pinch.
Who's Mr. Jensen?
He is our agriculture program manager. He also happens to operate a ranch. And so when we needed to get cattle out on a site, he was able to go and...
He's not overseeing these contracts?
Not overseeing the contracts. He's on the HCP team. So he is part of...
Who's the staff that's overseeing the contracts?
Andrew Defobis and Marissa Wisman, under my direction.
3B, C, D, and E, right? You just covered?
They all, yep, they all.
Questions on those items? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to 3F, H R, 3G, also H R, a couple of reclassification proposals.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tara Wickline, Conversation and Benefits Manager. Here to talk to you, as the Chair mentioned, about a couple of reclassification requests. The first one?
I want to thank you so much for bringing in the information you did and just call out what you worked with, not only the departments, but our budget team to identify if there was any general fund impacts. I liked your sentence that you summarized and said, "Central Service requests a slight decrease." That always happened in replastification.
Always pops up the page, doesn't it?
It's our favorite word.
Do word search for decrease. And public defense can afford to absorb due to the contract that was placed with T M B H A S O. Can you define that acronym just for the public?
Thurston Mason Behavioral?
Health Administrative Services.
Thank you.
Sorry, it wasn't pop quiz.
It was still the B H O the last time I paid any attention to it.
Yeah, please, carry on.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. So the first reclassification request is from Central Services. They have a vacant capital project manager two position that they want to reclassify to a procurement and contract specialist two. While reviewing the needs of the department, it sounds like they realize that for capital projects, they seem to be doing well with the staff that they have right now, whereas procurement seems to be more of a pain point. They could use some support there. And after the review with H R, we landed on the procurement and contract specialist two classification for that. And this is the one that is that decrease, everyone's favorite word, of about $400 a month in budget to make that change.
Questions on that item? Let me just write that down here. Okay, second one's public defense, you said?
Yes. Public defense. And Nora, Public Defense Director is here in case we have any super specific questions. Do you want to cover?
No, please.
So this one is a request to reclassify a legal assistant one to a legal assistant two. This is a position that is currently filled and the office needs additional higher level work. They need someone who can answer more technical questions, that can fill in for the paralegals, do some vacation coverage, things like that. This is an increase, but this position is reimbursed by the Thurston Mason. So it's no impact to the general fund. The county does get reimbursed for these costs.
Is that because it's the I T A or what is the?
So, yeah. So long and short, this is an I T A legal assistant position. All I T A services are reimbursable by the county. County went through a process. Even last year, changing how we go about getting reimbursed from the B H A. The B H A is statutorily required to reimburse all court services for involuntary treatment act work. So defense, courts, clerks, prosecuting attorney's office. So this is a direct support position for that work. We're able to absorb the request expense this year and next year. And then the county is eligible in 2026 to adjust the rate. So any other additional changes to expenses for the county can be adjusted and reimbursed by the B H A to the county starting in 2026. Looking at, yes.
Okay, I do understand that. But we don't have total control over that rate readjustment, right? Like that's a negotiation of some kind with, I don't know if...
It's a rolling three-year average by state law.
Oh, okay. So it would be captured?
Eventually.
Assuming we can show that it's directly related.
Right.
They don't, they don't micromanage and say, you know, you can have this kind of legal assistant, you can have this kind. I mean, do they dictate staffing to that level? Okay, so.
No, they can't do that.
Okay, perfect. That answers my question. Commissioner Edwards?
Are we getting real reimbursement, I guess? And the reason I put it that way?
Not 100%.
Okay, so now we've got the state, just throwing in another 60 bids for an example that we found out about maybe yesterday. And if we keep accepting this business about not 100%, not 100, pretty soon we just keep going farther in the hole as we try to meet the commitment. What would it take for us to be able to tell the state, no, we're not going to do this for 90% anymore? We want 110%. So we cover any other possibilities that might develop.
Yeah.
How can we do that?
I think that would have to be researched, Commissioner. And as was mentioned, we're looking forward to hearing from the Director, Joe Avalos, to kind of fill us in on the background. And then from there, we can have that conversation and see what the pathway forward is. I do agree that some level of advocacy is going to be required, but I just need to get more information on the background.
Other questions? Yes?
I have a question. So if it's not 100% reimbursable, but there's no general fund impact, where does that additional funding come from?
So until we can adjust our rate, it comes from our budget. So, and we're able to absorb this minor increase. But I think the adjustments that need to be made for the county in 2026 with our rate is probably going to be an ongoing conversation with the budget team.
So Patrick, you don't need additional general fund. You're able to absorb it in the current appropriation for your budget today?
That's correct. Thank you. We do not need additional general fund to cover this reclassification. And the way the, you know, the way the reimbursement structure is, is we can't make an adjustment until 2026. Similar to any other changes by the other stakeholders to I T A expenses, we have to wait until we can adjust that rate in 2026.
What's the increase?
You said $3,000 a year.
That's why you can absorb it.
That's why we can absorb. And this is again, you know, I appreciate the Board's philosophy on retention and this is another opportunity to do just that. Fantastic staff member that this will impact and keep the staff number here public defense.
Any other questions?
All right. Thanks for being here, Patrick. Good job, Chair.
Okay, next up. Item 3H, Public Health and Social Services. Amendment number one with Herrera Environmental Consultants for Lake Lawrence Sinobacteria Management Plan and Patterson and Offutt Lake Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all. So this is a contract amendment. Oh, sorry. Yes. My name is Stuart Whitford, Environmental Health Manager with Public Health Department. So today we have this A I S, which is to seek your approval of an amendment to a contract that was completed not too long ago. At the time, we wanted to make some, fiscal team wanted to make some changes to the contract. We ran out of time at that point. And so we always, we're going to do this amendment, so here it is. So this amendment makes changes to the contract. These changes are designed to better protect the financial interests of the county and build on and do not conflict with the standard professional services contract language. Herrera Environmental Consultants has reviewed and approved of these changes. There's detail on the sections that were, that were changes. And so we think it's an improved contract and we're seeking your approval of the amendment.
Improvement to the contract, is that going to be, I mean, does that, is anyone going to disagree with that?
No, and Herrera Environmental has already given the okay for these, for these changes.
Okay. Questions for you? All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Two more consent items. Three I is Community Planning and Economic Development. Set a public hearing for Grand Mound West, U G A expansion, land rezon and rezon amendment.
Ashley Myakin, N R M Director, Community Planning and Economic Development. This is the last phase, at least for now, of the Grand Mound land use projects. I know this has come before the Board a lot. These are two proposals, applicant-initiated proposals to expand the urban growth area to allow for additional industrial development and mixed density residential development down there at Grand Mound. We were hoping to bring this last year, and weren't able to because we had to work through the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee process. We are now through that. We've been working closely with the applicant on the environmental review, and we'll get that issued this month. And so this is the next step in the Board's process, which is setting up a public hearing. And then this will be pulled into that one-year package the Board is allowed to take final action on to amend the con plans. I'm happy to answer any questions. And if you need to know the names of the applicants, it's Womowski and Black Lake Quarry.
And, okay, so the last thing, are they both? I don't know exactly how these views come to us and what they say. Do they give it a thumbs up? Or, I mean, I, last I heard is they were working on traffic issues. And, and I was hearing that there was, you know, the two projects are obviously quite different in terms of what they are trying to accomplish. One's trying to accomplish housing, housing density. One's trying to, you know, basically reclaim a mining site. So is all that going along the way we expected? Or are there going to be any sort of surprises?
Well, we've been, we've been trying to work as proactively as possible with Washington State Department of Transportation as well as Washington State Department of Commerce to address any concerns that they have. So the applicants did complete a traffic impacts analysis. It has been reviewed by WashDOT at this point. They have not identified any additional concerns. You will see an environmental review get issued that does have some conditions related to traffic if these projects move forward at full potential build out at the proposed zoning. And then we have also addressed concerns from the Department of Commerce. They initially had concerns about whether our Buildable Lands Report really addressed these needs for additional industrial and residential land. And we have communicated with them that since our Buildable Lands Report was done a number of years ago, we've had industrial land studies done. We've also had a lot of housing allocation work done that clearly identifies a need both for these larger industrial sites that can be served by utilities as well as residential land that can accommodate more affordable housing types. So we think we've addressed all of those, and we're excited to bring it before the Board and get these projects wrapped up after years of these applicants waiting.
I'll jump in here real quick. There's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work that staff has done in honor of these two applications to keep the process moving, interfacing with the state government, ensuring that applicants have the right information for WashDOT. So this public hearing is kind of a culmination of a lot of that work that's gone on behind the scenes. We are never sure what's going to happen at a public hearing. That's why they exist, right? Is to get that information coming forward. But I think staff has done everything that they can to look around as many corners as they can. But this is that next step in the process in honor of those applicants. So this is a big step.
Good job. Anybody?
Can we get a summary rundown via email, please, on, on this? I just.
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm, I'm trying to just connect, just, we've, it's been a while since we did this one. And so just before the public hearing.
Yeah. I think we, I think we did a little dust off and kind of resummarize.
Yep. That would be very helpful before the public hearing.
Yeah, we need to get some orientation.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, October 29th. So that's the proposal. Any concerns on that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
We go to three J, Public Health and Social Services. Set a public hearing for the 2025 Lake Management District Assessment Roles for Long Lake L M D 21 and Patterson Lake L M D 23.
Stuart, you're back. I know. Good morning, Stuart Whitford, Environmental Health Manager with the Public Health Department. It's good to be here, so I wish Rob was here. But he is not, he's sailing still, I think.
I don't think he wishes to be here.
Yeah, so this is at its core a move to set a public hearing for Tuesday, November 5th at 3:30 P M or soon thereafter to accept and consider public comments on the 2025 proposed rate changes for the Long Lake L M D number 21 and Patterson Lake number 23. I did notice Rob entered this A I S before he left. And at the time, he wasn't aware that Patterson had met, as their steering committee had met, and decided to go with a 5% across-the-board increase for 25. And so that was neglected from here. I apologize for that, I just noticed that. They changed their mind. And so their proposal includes a 5% across-the-board increase for 2025, which they're allowed to do under their implementing ordinance.
Stuart, we can work with the clerk to make those changes?
Yeah, I apologize, I just noticed it. Because Rob and I have been trying to work together and then. So let me just go through this. Further resolutions of formation, annual increases are considered to keep pace with inflationary factors and to address lake management initiatives. Long Lake number 21 is not seeking a rate increase for 25, but assessing rates to parcels within the district that have changed assessment categories, have been developed or subdivided. The recommended changes for 25 follow active engagement with the taxpayers, rate payers of the district, as conducted by the steering committee. Patterson Lake is looking to downgrade one parcel, that is a Trowbridge parcel, which I think he's happy with. It reduces his fees within the district as after additional review. The parcel is now considered undeveloped. And that was kind of a cool thing because one of the steering committee members went out there with Mr. Trowbridge to look at the property and saw that the building there was in disrepair. It didn't have any plumbing or any kind of a septic system. And so it was determined to be undeveloped. So I thought that was a great outcome. As I just mentioned, they're also proposing a 5% across-the-board increase. The reason is that they're under the impression that they were slowed down by the county and getting, just, I'm just telling you what my understanding of the reasoning was, of actually getting the, the formation of the Patterson District going. And they wanted to build up their resources to implement the plan they currently have to manage their lake. And so that's what they're proposing. And I provided a whole bunch of attachments in there. If you want to look at the details, it'll show you how much the rates are increasing or decreasing, you know, by, by property. So all the information is there if you have, you know, any questions today.
Thank you. Okay, Department item four A, Emergency Services, Medic One Training Equipment. Mannequins and simulation. Never seen it spelled that.
Commissioners, Ben Miller Todd, Director of Emergency Services. I'll jump into the first one, which is the mannequins and simulation equipment. I did want to point out that there's an excellent description that was also attached with this packet regarding what we're proposing, why we're proposing it, and what the intent was. One of the components that I wanted to read to you, actually, was.
Carry on.
Did I miss something? Okay. One of the components that I wanted to read to you was, Thurston County Medic One is attempting to build a robust training program for our new state-accepted continuing training program. High-fidelity simulations training is a valuable tool for paramedics because it provides a realistic immersive environment where they can practice critical skills without risk of actual patients. Additionally, there's research that shows that the ability to build a realistic scenario to providers builds neuroplasticity and creates an experience for the provider to recall in real-life encounter. This ensures mistakes are made in the simulation environment and not the patient setting. And so the reason behind a lot of these equipment investments and simulation investments is because we have a new and growing workforce. Our workforce is turning over. We're lucky to have paramedics within Thurston County that the average age in all three of our departments is 41. But the average age in all three of our departments as of five years ago was 45. And we're continuing decline because of that significant turnover within those populations, that we have a lot of newer paramedics that need a lot of training. We're also transitioning that workforce over from what would be traditional recertification. This goes into weeds just a little bit. But an ongoing training plan, which takes a whole lot more time, energy, and effort in order to manage and create simulated environments for those paramedics on a quarterly basis. The equipment wouldn't just be used for the A L S program, but it would also be used for E M T training classes and other components throughout, any training environment throughout the county. In terms of the financial components, this was built into the 2024 biennial budget, so it's within the budget this year. We're not asking for a budget amendment. And it's also been reviewed by our D P A and the county auditor in terms of the process for cooperative purchasing. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
E M S Council?
They, they approved the biennial budget, which this was incorporated, and the training plan was incorporated into that discussion.
This stuff's expensive and you need it.
Yeah. I would say, just for context, the last time we bought any mannequins for our paramedic program was in 2015. And that was the basic A L S mannequin, half torso, with the ability to intubate. And so this is a step in the right direction to, to meet the needs of a, of a changing technology, so.
Any other questions? Yeah, could you close?
You might have already said this, but how many mannequins does this purchase?
This actually looks at two separate mannequins. One is more of a pediatric size, and one is an adult A L S mannequin size. But I will absolutely clarify that that's still the case within this.
So one of each?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're not just of mannequin-like sears.
This is a full simulation, yeah. So able to work with all of our cardiac monitors or ultrasound, do it, able to do innovations, even able to do some invasive procedures, so.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
You got the next item then? Four B, Preventative Maintenance Contract for Stryker, Gurney, and Power Load Systems.
I'm actually going to wrap the next two together. These are both striker agreements. They both service our equipment for the load systems as well as Life Pac 15s. Just as a point of clarification, the last time we had this in front of you was in 2019. That was pre-pandemic. There's been a lot of changes in place in terms of the cost. Just for your awareness, in terms of the cardiac monitors, which are the Life Pac 15s when you're looking at it, there's been a 46% increase in this professional maintenance agreement. And there's been a 53% increase in the gurney load and power systems. This is actually sitting under, when I came to you about the medic units, I don't know if you hearken back, in late '22, early '23, I remind you that it was 76% increase in just buying medic units. Specialty equipment has gone up significantly since pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic levels, as well as servicing specialty equipment. It's just part of, unfortunately, doing business. This is built into the Medic One operating budget for '24. It's already been approved within the budget. We're not asking for a budget amendment. And it's also procured. Both of these are done through a sole source with the documentation attached. And this is sole source so that we don't avoid warranties on specialty equipment.
Questions?
Good job, Ben.
Thank you.
Ask to do in business.
Painful some days.
Public Health and Social Services, five A. Amendment number 22 to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Good morning, it's Dr. John Fryhite, N R M Director of Public Health and Social Services. And this is amendment number 22, providing an additional $2,188,633. It affects the statements of work for COVID-19 vaccine, hepatitis B immunization, improving vaccination rates, our public health emergency preparedness, as well as other components under those statements of work. And we ask for your approval of this amendment. I can answer any questions.
Could we from here?
Thank you. I have a feeling one day we'll reach amendment 100, but.
Right, right.
But with the additional $2 million, so you said it was specifically for vaccines and COVID-related instances. So I'm wondering, what's the plan with this additional $2 million?
Yes, and I can get you that specific plan. I don't have that in front of me right now. It, it comes out of the Office of Immunization, so they're under these different named buckets, like the COVID-19 vaccine or perinatal hepatitis C. F P H S is certainly included in this, and the M C H block grant, maternal-child health block grant. So there's seven different areas under this $2 million, and so I can get you those specifics.
So this is just one-time funding, right? This is not ongoing funds? It was just an additional that the state had and, and passed it through to us?
As I understand, but I'll find out for sure.
Okay.
Other questions for Public Health Director? Nope, okay, thank you. That's it for the agenda for next Tuesday. We have a commission report, item six A, and no public hearing. So that is that. And we'll move on to proclamation awards.
Commissioners, please, for information's warning, I have no further updates. We have representatives from the prosecuting attorney's office and the sheriff's office.
Is there a draft proclamation that's circulating?
Yes, I've received a draft from the P A O's office with their updated statistics and things like that, so we'll get that.
Okay, any questions on that? No. Go to Advisory Boards and Commissions? Yes, sir. When you, you say maybe somebody's going to be coming from the sheriff's office for that proclamation? I, I just, it's one of the more dangerous calls officers go on, on domestic violence, and I like to have that point of view. Thank you. We have sheriff and prosecuting attorney. Great. Perfect. Okay, then Advisory Boards and Commissions?
I have no updates for you.
Dates here, okay. Salary Commission's moving along. It's, we've done anything lately?
Yeah, you see the update that Kim sent this morning?
I missed it, I have something.
I was expecting you all to jump up. Anyways, there's an update in your email, H R, that they've arrived at some percentages. While Maria is off this week, she will be back next week. So if any of you want to get more background on how those numbers arrived at, just let us know.
I just like to make sure they have the people they need to do their jobs. So their, their work is their work, so appreciate that.
I think that, more perspectives Maria mentioned to me is the more that they understand the position and context, the better informed they are to make the decisions. And so from a commissioner's standpoint, I think there's an opportunity for us to give them more information about the complexities, your role. So I think there's a little, there's some areas where folks may not always understand what a county commissioner does as compared to like a council member or someone that works for the state. So it was interesting perspectives that I'll have Maria share if anyone's interested.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner items.
I do have one, but I'm not sure if it's something we can maybe address at the planning session. It's in relation to the public hearing tomorrow that the Supreme Court is going to do in terms of public defense standards. So I'm happy to either address it now or address it at planning commission.
We have time now.
Okay. So tomorrow is the public hearing. It is going to take place here at the atrium. I plan to be in attendance. I was wondering if there was anyone else who was planning to be in attendance. And, you know, I was going to kind of, my testimony was going to be in part of kind of what it's, it's been in the past and the past public hearings I've attended. But not sure, I guess, you know, just wanted to bring it up just in, in case that, you know, there's going to be other board members or if there's anything else that I should prepare for.
What time is that happening? I'm going to give an overview.
Yeah, tomorrow at 9:00 A M, the Supreme Court will be holding their hearing on indigenous public defense. Here at the atrium in the boardroom. So the folks are able to sign up to testify, be in and out at 8:30 A M. And they are accepting in-person and virtual testimony. And the hearing is expected to conclude about noon.
Logistics for tomorrow. I want to thank Amy and also Jason and Sherry on I T for working with the state. But they will be utilizing the parking, Commissioner's parking, so, and County Manager's parking, so we'll be parking elsewhere if you come in that day. If you come in tomorrow. So we'll be parking elsewhere if you come in that day, if you come in tomorrow. And, yeah, they will have state security here, and there also will be, their television station will be set up.
TVW will be here to livestream.
I will touch base with Patrick to see if he's planning to attend. As far as information from our side of commissioners, if you want any astronomical information, just let us know.
Commissioner. Is WAC going to participate at all? Does anybody know the ledge committee?
Yeah, there's several members from WAC that are planning to attend. And of course, there's going to be commissioners from other counties either attending virtually or coming in person for that.
So it sounds like we're adequately represented on the concerns it's bringing with it. Is this going to be the full court or just a subcommittee of the court?
It's going to be, my understanding is going to be the full court.
All the justices will be here.
Yeah.
And they've got their own security coming?
The state patrol.
Is going to have that all handled?
Yep. And I believe our sheriff team was linked in to the conversation early on. They've done a couple of site visits and have looked at everything.
I mean, because this is a public meeting, do we want to let the public know? Do we want to have a quick little overview for the public about what our concerns are? What's coming or no? Doesn't matter to me. I just wonder if the public sees this, maybe they'll tune in because they do see it. We won't tell them very much. And they'll want to watch. But it's a big deal, you know? It's a statewide impact on all the counties, and it's a major change to the criminal justice component on how we do business. And I guess I'll just leave it there if nobody wants to expand on it, so.
Commissioner, you want to expand? You want us to get Patrick here to expand upon this? And I'm not prepared to make comments, but as has been stated by Commissioner Edwards, yes, this is significant, and our participation in following of this issue is important.
It's major important. But as long as we've got it covered, that's all we can do is express our concerns.
I guess one piece that I have a question on, it was suggested at a previous public hearing that one of the suggestions from, Robin, you were there, so I'm going to see if you remember it more clearly. But one of the suggestions was that, you know, there's the attorney side, and then there's the administrative side, and that it kind of be flipped and that the court, you know, grant it, but the administrative side be first, the advocates and the social workers, and then the attorneys. That way it gives county a little bit more time to kind of fill those attorney gaps and kind of. And so I guess I was going to ask, is that maybe, you know, if an option that I can also, like we're going to say that we would be in support of? Or does the board just need more time? And I'll just stick to the usual MO of we need funding for this?
Are you going to be bringing that in front of, as far as testimony on your behalf or on our behalf tomorrow?
Well, I was just going to kind of reinstate what's been stated before, which is we need additional funding in order to address these needs. And so that's kind of what the board has authorized me previously to speak on, and so that's kind of what I was going to speak on. And that's why I wanted a little bit more input from the board to see if, like, do we expand on that or do we just keep on with the same messaging of we need more funding?
My message on that would just be a little more specific in that they did this three-year phase in. But my message would be that, please don't think that that's adequate. Like the three-year, I mean, a phase in is good, but like, that's not, it's way too, without additional funding stream, that's way too aggressive. And that, and just because you're phasing over three years, we're not going to get there. So please don't, please don't believe that because you did that, we're all good. Like, that's, it's a necessary but completely insufficient condition.
And my input is that times 10. Commissioner Minster just said, so don't hold back, I guess, is my input on it.
The other reality that Patrick has made us aware of is when all the jurisdictions will be looking for people at the same time, it is going to create an impact not only to what's available in the market or folks coming through, but also firms to contract with. You know, when you saturate the need that fast, the supply will not keep up. And so the only natural response is that prices will go up for service.
Yeah.
And recruitment and retention will become extremely difficult or being poached from neighboring jurisdictions.
Another thing I did bring last time was the space needs as well.
Yes.
And just that we're already struggling with space needs, and this would just create additional challenges for that.
It's the trickle effect, or the waterfall effect, that our other law and justice counterparts, if there's more over here doing work, then it's going to have an impact operationally to others. So we're hearing from courts and from the prosecuting attorney's office.
Are there going to be, like, is John Tunine planning on being here?
This has been widely advertised in the associations, but I'll round up with our team today just to make sure that the main players are aware.
And maybe other county managers? I mean, I look at the county manager as overseeing our budget and being able to comment on the total impact on how that could be detrimental to other portions of our budget. You know, we're going to steal from Peter to pay Paul kind of a thing. How are we going to make it work? And that's where you get to come in as the magician, I think, Leonard.
As ever.
I'm looking at my notes from the OPD, Office of Public Defense Committee Advisory Committee meeting where I sit, and they had some discussion of this. For example, it was stated that 663 lawyers graduate from Washington law schools every year and we need like 2,000. You can't, at math, don't math. Right. They're not all getting, can become public defender. That they had numbers, probably that we provided, like crunching all the numbers from all the different counties for total public defense costs, just so you have a sense of scale. According to them, weird that I'm looking to them for our number, but they gave all the numbers. I wrote them down. Thurston was came at 7.1 million. Does that sound right, Robin? So we spend about 7. So if we're talking about a 50% increase or something like that, you have a sense of scale. That could be, that could leave us $3 or $4 million short, you know, that we'd have to find from somewhere place. You know, King is the most at 86 million, Pierce 19.6, Snohomish 13, Thurston 7.1, Clark 10.4, Spokane 9.5. I wrote those down because those were the other. Why is there such an emphasis on this one specific aspect of the legal system? I mean, there's needs everywhere. Why is, it seems like, you know, putting everything in this one bucket just throws the whole thing out of whack. You know, you should be seeking balance, and this is not seeking balance in moving forward. I don't have the answer to that. I mean, this start, the effort started from some point in the past, but I don't really know how it got started and why this focus. I mean, having been a public defender full-time for the state of Alaska, where we had, we had ups and downs. I mean, there was, there was a year where the caseload was just absolutely crushing. I mean, we were supposed to have 90 case profile. We mixed all the cases, but just use this as a sense of scale. Like, we had 90, and that was a rough, full-time, underfunded public defense caseload, and I had 163 for a while. So I was doing two lawyers' jobs, basically. And it was just unreal. So that, it's real. I don't know that, I've never been a public defender full-time in Washington, so I don't know if they're looking at that type of a, of a underfunding and over, you know, caseload. I don't know if it's that severe, but justice is, yeah, I mean, it, justice is severely compromised when you have something, situations like that. Sure, but it's just one, this is one aspect of, that's systemically, you know, underfunded. You can't just take one aspect of it and. Well, but if there's not enough, if there's not enough prosecutors and judges, things just slow down. But if it's not, if it's not a good, high-quality enough defense, judges and prosecutors don't slow down. They stuff the case in the system and injustice is resolved. I mean, of course, I'm biased, I'm a former public defender, but I mean, there are, there is a unique role to the public defense that probably justifies some kind of a focus. Again, I see your point, though, I mean, and it's not the only place. Prosecutors are working on their own caseload standards and for their own recruitment and retention and quality of life, and that's fair. A doctor can't just focus on heart health. It's fair for them to do that. They've got to focus on whole body health, otherwise. No, no, fair point.
I guess having been around the longest, it really started, in my estimation, with the Miranda decision back in the 60s. That's when this whole adjustment came. I mean, think of the abuses that took place prior to the Miranda decision. And I think this is just a continuation of adequate protections for charged individuals, I think.
Yeah, and Commissioner Edwards makes a great point because, you know, public defenders and criminal defense lawyers are really the societal, society's only check on police The constitutional standards of unreasonable search and seizure and all that, like, doesn't mean anything unless there's adequate lawyers to challenge the evidence in court. That's the only check on it. And that's a matter, and I can tell you, that's a function of time and ability to scrutinize the evidence and write the motions and get the work done. So it's kind of this special role that defense lawyers play within our, within our legal system and within our just freedom. I mean, it really goes right to the Bill of Rights and the core of the constitutional freedoms, to be free from unreasonable search and seizure.
Just as a follow-up to that, I mean, in the law enforcement field, it, as much as that was a problem when that was initiated in the 60s, it forced change in who we put in those positions of authority, the education of those folks, how they conducted their day-to-day business. But it really started to change at that point. And, you know, I guess you can only say it changed for the better because it gave those more adequate protections and things. I mean, I'll bet you there was a lot of railroad going on prior to that. You know, I don't know that. That was before my time. But we, I came into it right as that was happening.
Well, that would be, thank you for bringing that up because I didn't know that was happening, and it would be pretty something to see right here in our own courtroom.
Yeah.
To have the whole Supreme Court foshed in here.
I would hope there'd be some news coverage on this here. I mean, like, I assume, I mean, I know the TVW is going to be here, but I would hope that they'd get some news coverage on it. For at least the evening news, at least 10 minutes or something. It's going to be such a major impact to government in general.
Yeah, not to be.
I don't think, a lot of people don't understand it.
We do expect plenty of local media coverage tomorrow. They don't often hold public hearings. They mentioned their last one was held in 2016, 2014.
Cool. Is this, have we done any kind of notice to the public? I mean, I really haven't heard a whole bunch about this.
The Supreme Court has done.
And, but we haven't.
Because it's not our hearing.
But it's going to be in our office, and if it's going to, you know, disrupt, you know, I would almost be like, hey, you want your permits? Come the next day.
Yeah, that might be something to it. It might be a good workday for staff.
Yeah, we can send something out. We'll have the team put that together today. It's a good, a good.
Yeah, if I was planning on getting my passport this week, that would be the day I wouldn't want to come.
Wouldn't want to go, yeah. Actually, I'm rethinking. I've got appointments tomorrow here, and I think I'm rethinking.
Go have some coffee somewhere.
Yep. I think going to have to make some changes because I do think it's, it could be packed. You know, we don't have, we don't have enough parking. I mean, that's pretty obvious. On a regular day, sometimes we don't have enough, so.
Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've sent communication out to the commissioners' offices about this leading up to it?
We've sent a couple of notes out, and we've sent notes out to all.
Department heads.
Departments and offices in the building and to all atrium staff.
Yeah, okay. About parking impacts and things like that.
Okay, other commissioner items. Nope. Okay, it's 10:05. We're adjourned for this meeting. We have a planning session at 10:30. Short break.